Ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one my nation under God, with noble liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call for any attendance.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia, Counselor Tenere Garcia, Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Recupero, Counselor Vido, Counselor DeJesus?
Present.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Here.
Counselor Vega, Counselor Taylor?
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, you have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I did hear from Damali, who's sick, so she couldn't attend. Tenere is stuck at the airport and can't get here, and Melinda is babysitting and can't make the meeting, for the record. Yes, at this time, I'm going to call for a moment of silence for Chelsea's Senator Tom Birmingham, who passed away over the weekend. Public speaking at this time? Anybody who wants to address the council can take the mic? State your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm John Valanche. I'm a native of Chelsea, but I currently live on Rogers Street in Cambridge. I'm going to be real brief and then come back. I want to just introduce who I'm with tonight. So as I said, I'm John Valanche. I'm one of the co-presidents of Comunidades Enraizadas Community Land Trust. That means Rooted Communities Community Land Trust. I'm joined here by my co-president, Suyapa Perez, Patricia E. Banks, Patty E. Banks, and Myra Romero. This forms some of our board. Our other board members aren't here tonight, but with us in spirit. So with that said, I just want to introduce Suyapa to say our first few words.
Mi nombre es Suyapa Perez. Mi nombre es Suyapa Perez, en la 59 de la Cherry Street. Estoy aquí ante ustedes para decirles como co-presidente de Comunidades Enraizadas que tenemos muchas esperanzas de que ustedes representantes de este pueblo. Van a tomar las mejores decisiones con un apoyo solidario hacia nuestra organización. Comunidades Enraizadas es una organización sin fines de lucro. Que tiene como una misión obtener apartamentos o casas o viviendas a precios accesibles para la comunidad. Y solamente con el apoyo de ustedes y de toda la comunidad vamos a hacer realidad este proyecto. Tenemos casi doce años de estar laborando bajo el sol, la nieve, la lluvia, para llegar a ser lo que hoy somos. Y el año pasado hemos recibido el permiso para ser una organización sin fines de lucro. Ya tenemos toda la documentación, con todas las pólizas bajo la sombra de Green Roots. El año pasado. Green Roots.
Just one minute left.
Un minuto nada más. Bien, es bien duro porque es una organización que tiene una visión y una misión de servicio a la población. Les hemos entregado documentos en sus manos, que ojalá los puedan leer, y si requieren un poco más de información, pues aquí estamos.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Patricia E. Banks. Pues como ya escucharon, ya somos una organización que está reconocida por el estado, y pues somos una organización sin fines de lucro, que hemos luchado, estamos trabajando para esto, y gracias a Dios, pues ya la organización está declarada. Estamos viendo la... Tenemos más de doce años trabajando para lograr tener esta organización, porque hay muchas personas que están desalojándose, están sufriendo por eso mismo, porque no hay apartamento a bajo costo. Por eso estamos aquí pidiendo el soporte de los concejales para que nos ayuden con fondos del CPC para poder construir, poder tener tierras que lo piensen para que nos apoyen. Para así, todas esas personas que están sufriendo desalojos pueden lograr tener un techo y pueden estar bien con sus familias. Para que esos padres que tienen dos trabajos, para poder pagar la renta, dejen a sus niños, no tienen el calor de padres, y así ellos pueden tener una vivienda asequible que ellos puedan pagar para vivir. Thank you, buenas noches, y espero verles pronto.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone, again. I'm also John Valanche, again, and I'm just going to keep my remarks brief, but I do want to acknowledge all of the counselors who are present here, given the conditions outside. I hope your New Year is warm and fulfilling, even though it's icy cold outside. And I also want to give a special shout-out to Counselor Taylor. Taylor, thank you for providing quorum for us tonight, so that we can actually meet, and that my trip was not in vain, so thank you. So as we've all said, we are members, board members of Comunidades Enraizadas, Rooted Communities Land Trust. And so you heard from Suyapa and Patty kind of where this comes from, why we're doing the work that we're doing. And so I just want to give a little bit more context that, as a land trust, we work together to build community, secure land, and create opportunities for residents facing displacement to either rent or buy properties at an extremely affordable price that's typically unavailable at the regular market rate. We do this by separating the ownership of the land from the ownership of the property, where the land trust owns and manages the land, and the resident rents or owns the property itself. In this way, across the country and around the world, land trusts preserve affordability in rapidly developing neighborhoods. And as we saw in the Great Recession, Chelsea was one of the hardest hit by the housing crisis, and following the devastation of COVID, well, we've got a long way to go to ensure that residents have the security and stability of long-term housing, whether that's renting and owning here in Chelsea. So that's why I'm here. Suyapa and Patty are all here tonight to ask you to please approve and fully fund the CPC's recommendation to authorize $30,000 to Comunidades Enraizadas CLT for pre-acquisition capital. And I'm asking you to do that for three main reasons, for the three benefits it'll provide us. As a new nonprofit, we're working so hard every day. We've got a working board, okay? So we're not just meeting once a month, multiple times a month. We're coming out to these meetings. We're doing our work to build our capacity, to organize the community, to educate ourselves, and to fundraise. But a pool of pre-acquisition funds like this isn't something that grant makers typically offer us. And so approving and fully funding the CPC's recommendation for CE CLT would open up a critical resource. The second thing is it would allow us to be more competitive. We know that Chelsea's a hot market, and we need to be able to have this cash on hand to evaluate the properties that we are seeking to acquire, to invest in, and to build community in. And so doing this will ensure that we're competitive as an organization that's here representing the renters and the homeowners of the community. And finally, as a preliminary Latina immigrant coalition, we're building a foundation to prevent displacement and house our residents in perpetuity. Having this funding will help us achieve our mission and grow our organization to the next stage, to prevent displacement, promote homeownership, and create thriving and healthy communities. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you will approve the recommendation and fully fund the CPC's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers before this council? Seeing none? Okay. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Janice Stafford, 99 Fourth Street in Chelsea. I work for Housing Families, and that is our Chelsea satellite location. I've not been here before, so I'm not sure if this is an appropriate venue for me to speak about our application, so I'll just keep it brief. So we are seeking $100,000 in direct funds for Chelsea residents. So we would be using the money to prevent homelessness and to help people get into new apartments when necessary, to pay for security deposits, and to stabilize tenancies. So Housing Families is a nonprofit. We have several different divisions. The division that I'm the director of is Homelessness Prevention and Legal Services. So our work primarily involves case management, legal services, and financial resources when available. And we find those three things together very powerful in the prevention of homelessness. So thank you so much. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have that might not be appropriate. But thank you for having me, and that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we'll close our portion of the meeting. Next order of business?
Move in a minute.
Calvin Brown moves, accept and file. Minutes under suspension. Seeing no objection, so moved. Next order of business?
We have a communication. We have a copy of a communication received from the Community Preservation Act Chairperson, Juan Vargas, with regards to the four recommendations for grants from the CPA.
Going to recognize Counselor Haddelberg at this time.
I'd move to accept and file the communication from the Community Preservation Chairperson, and there will be something coming up.
On the new business. You have the floor, Counselor.
I did want to speak briefly on the communication. What's going to happen today is somewhat boring, and I wanted to explain it because when people come up, I think it's important that they understand what's happening. As a general rule, financial orders, meaning things that require us to appropriate money, will move to a second reading, which means that they get looked at and voted on the next time. And this is a procedural habit, simply so that people have time to think, process anything they're thinking about, and come up with it. We also tend to do the same thing with things that may not technically require a full second reading, but which involve money, and it may be simply a nice habit to create space for consideration and all this. We would intend typically with this sort of order to move it to a second reading. Sometimes people come up and they see the order come before us, and we move it to a second reading, and they're like, why did I show up? What just happened? You know? And so what you're going to see is really a procedural action meant to give a little space and consideration, then the actual order would get voted on next meeting. So that's just standard practice. I did want to take a moment, while this is in front of us, to say that I greatly appreciate the amount of work that's happened. I served on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for a time. I'm aware of the amount of work and energy and planning that's happened with the Community Preservation Act funds and the amount of thought that has gone into that. I'm also aware of, there's a little sort of background chatter that is not relevant to this specific matter, but which I'd like to use this specific matter to kind of raise a flag on and say I'd like to hold a conversation a few months down the road after it has time to bake on a little bit, because I think many of us feel, it's kind of like we have all this money that we've allocated, and we've said, you know, here's some money for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, here's some money that has gone to the Community Preservation Act. There's a lot of work that's gone into what's to be done with that money, but much of that money is still sitting in the buckets it was originally put in, and it hasn't been spent. And I know many of us feel that the best time to spend money on affordable housing or open space or any other community priority is kind of yesterday, and the next best time is today. And I want to make sure that we're giving the boards the confidence. I know there's a concern about continuing funding for staff. I know there's a concern about what if a new project comes up, we have to hold funds in reserve. I would love to basically say I'd love to find the money for the next great project when it comes, but I want to spend the money that we're allocating now so that we can do some good in the community, and I don't want to create pockets of hoarded money. That's a much different conversation than this matter. I wanted to simply throw it out there as something to maybe bake along and think about a little bit, and maybe we can have a more formal conversation about that after a little time has passed. So bottom line, you'll see the actual order get moved to a second reading and voted on at our next meeting.
Thank you, Counselor.
President, may I just real briefly say a statement?
Sure.
I just... Lo voy a decir en español, disculpa. Quiero reconocer a las personas que estuvieron aquí hablando esta tarde, Suyapa, Mira, Patty. Ustedes son tan admirables, de verdad, porque tener la oportunidad de estar aquí para pedir la aprobación de un proyecto con los fondos que se hicieron posibles simplemente porque ustedes tocaron ese fuerte, y solo quiero reconocer ese esfuerzo. So I just want to recognize real briefly, I echo everything my brother counselor said, but it is an honor to see these community members here today sharing with us their ideas of how they want to spend money that is only possible for us to have as a council because of their own hands that went around knocking on doors to get the CPC created in Chelsea. So I just want to briefly mention that and congratulate you guys, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to congratulate the speakers who came up tonight to show appreciation for your efforts. You're part of the community, you live in the community, you're here to work. We need as much help as possible to try to get the affordable housing. I was just telling some of my colleagues today, other communities are saying, hey, we got too much affordable housing, but we know we have a major problem here, not only with housing, but also keeping housing affordable. So I think that you've earned an opportunity to be at the table, you've come here, you've been a part of this community, as you stated, 12 years, you've been laboring and still working to try to work with the city. So I'm interested in learning more about the work as we go forward, and it's great to have community members who come in here to live here in the community and stay in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other council want to speak on the matter? Seeing none, next order of business?
We have under unfinished business, an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson with regards to the ordinance amendment to streamline event permitting. The amended version was acted at the conference, at your last conference.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Motion to adopt the amendment to streamline event permitting ordinance by roll call vote.
You want to remove it from unfinished business?
Take it from unfinished business?
And have a roll call.
And have a roll call. Thank you, Counselor. All right, Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just think this order that we had before us, when we had a meeting with the city manager, and there were some concerns with other council members about the language, I understand that some of the language was changed, but at that meeting, Mr. President, we did not have a quorum to actually even go forward with the meeting. And again, tonight, I think, you know, bringing it back before us, again, with five members out of order, well, out of the hall tonight, it's only six of us voting. I think that we owe all the fairness, not only to the former city manager for the work and the time that he put in it, but also to make sure it's also what we would like to see. We got this here, and again, we only have six members of the city council. When we initially had that meeting, there was not a quorum, there was a lot of discussion. It's a really easy piece of document, but we need to get it right, and I just think that we should consider sending it to a conference and letting the rest of the council members be aware of it.
Are you offering an amendment to the original motion?
I am, Mr. President. If I could, I'd like to offer a motion that we send this to conference, and we get the conference out of the conference, we'll have our vote on it, and just give this respect and an opportunity for the city council members that's not here tonight, that many of them, whether it was the inclined weather, wanted to be here, but they're not, and I just think we just owe them that due respect. Thank you.
Well, if I may, I mean, those of those counselors who took the time to show up at the conference and who are here tonight, I think it's unfair that we want to send it back to a conference. I don't have a problem having to go back to a conference. We had plenty of time to review it and whatnot. So on the amendment?
Send it back to conference.
Send it back to the... Under suspension.
Okay, you have second readings. The first, second reading is an order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Robinson, audit that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54, Budget Management Procedures whereby costs incurred in FY22 were not paid and are owed to the vendors, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY23 budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure...
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
A motion to waive the remainder of the reading and adopt this by roll call vote. If there are no objections.
Clerk will call a roll.
A yes to adopt. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, absent. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, six in favor and none opposed. The motion is adopted. Okay, now your next order under second readings introduced by Counsel Robinson. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54, 64 Budget Management Procedures, $3,051.52 from the Chelsea Public Library expenditure lines to satisfy the following unpaid costs from the prior year.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote. We have the remainder of the reading, if there are no objections.
Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, absent. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, and Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed. The motion is adopted. You have your final second reading for appropriation. Audit that the sum of $5 million be appropriated from the APPA funds under the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan for the Keriev Water Sewer and Roadway Reconstruction Project account, which has not yet been undertaken and will be deferred for later funding, and for which no liabilities have been incurred, is hereby transferred in the amount of $5 million to a new APPA Downtown Broadway revitalization project.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote. I'd speak on it briefly.
Yes, you have the floor, Counselor.
This one carries a big price tag, so I thought it was worth just briefly explaining for the public. This is the project that came before us a meeting ago. We read the communication on it. We're essentially transferring $5 million from a project that was contemplated on Keriev to Broadway, which essentially needs the funding sooner. So we are moving a substantial amount of money to accelerate a project and just voting on it. The other two orders that you saw were essentially small money orders, making accounting adjustments between periods.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, absent. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed. The motion is adopted. New business, Mr. Chairman.
We're on new business.
First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Whereas the city council on January 17, 2023, in a city council subcommittee to discuss the position of city council clerk, now therefore be it hereby ordered that the city council of the city of Chelsea will reissue the job description for the position of clerk of the city council as a full-time position of the 35 hours with a flexible schedule.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote.
Anyone who want to speak on the matter? Okay, Calvin Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something we had in subcommittee last week. This is a full slash part-time, flexible time opportunity for someone that's looking to help out with the job that we're trying to get for the city council, to take our outgoing city clerk, Paul Casino's job. We're hoping to get a full-time person, but in light of not being available to get a full-time person, we will be able to discuss and have some conversation about flexible hours, and Mr. President have determined that those flexible hours should be not to exceed certain amount of hours that we would have with the applicant or the proper candidate. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, I'll ask the clerk for roll call.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, absent. Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent, and Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed. The motion is adopted. Your next order under new business introduced by Counsel Robinson, whereas the city council has received notice of... has received notice of Thomas G. Ambrosino's pending resignation from the position of city manager. Whereas the city charter on January 9, 2023, pursuant to Section 4-5, appointed Edward Keefe acting interim city manager. Whereas the city council on January 17, 2023, in a subcommittee with Mr. Keefe in attendance reviewed and discussed the terms and conditions of his appointment and employment as acting city manager, now therefore be it hereby ordered that the city council of the city of Chelsea pursuant to charter sections 1-3 and 4-5 hereby authorize city council president enter into an employment agreement similar to the terms and conditions outlined in the attached agreement.
Chair recognizes Council Hattlerberg.
Motion to table this matter until our next meeting. We're still waiting for input from the candidate, the city managers, solicitor?
Yes. Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, yeah, we had a meeting here.
No discussion, no discussion.
It's tabled, yeah. To a set meeting, to the actual...
Next meeting.
Okay.
Next scheduled meeting.
Which would be February 6.
The next order under new business introduced by Council Robinson, whereas the city council has received notice of Thomas G. Ambrosino's pending resignation from the position of city manager. Whereas the city council on January 17, 2023, in the city council subcommittee to discuss hiring a consultant to assist with the city manager search, now therefore be it hereby ordered that the city council of the city of Chelsea engage the Collins Center to consult and assist the city council in the city manager search process, and the city council president is authorized to execute an agreement.
Chair recognizes Council Hattlerberg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote.
On a roll call vote. Any discussion? Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so again, this is very interesting, and we want the residents to be aware of this here. This is an agreement that we discussed at a subcommittee. Out of this agreement, we voted or we supported this resolution or this resolution going forward tonight to hire a professional outlet group to help us with to-do groundwork. Prior to all of that, we are, as city council members, will have a discussion, lead a discussion about what we like to see, what type of city managers that the city will be looking for, and we have some input from our community. We're hoping that at the next meeting or so, we'll be able to have this done, and we also have some screen work from our president of how that committee will be established if it goes beyond the city council in this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other speakers? Seeing none?
Roll call.
Oh, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call.
Councilor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Judy Garcia, absent. Councilor Teneri Garcia, absent. Council Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Council Recupero, absent. Council Vido, absent. Council DeJesus?
Yes.
Council Hattlerberg?
Yes.
Council Melinda Vega, absent. And Council Taylor?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted.
Motion is adopted.
The next order is introduced by Council Robinson. That the council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on awarding of grant funding for FY2022 community preservation projects in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 53D...
Chair recognizes Council Hattlerberg.
I'd ask that this be moved to a second reading.
Under suspension, seeing no objections, so moved.
The final order is introduced by Council Vido and Council Taylor.
Co-signed.
Co-signed, Council Taylor. Order that a subcommittee conference be held on Monday, January 30, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the rules and regulations for the fiscal year 2023, City Council.
Stop unanimously under suspension if there are no objections. So moved.
So you have, Mr. Chairman, the rest of the evening.
Any public announcements or... Oh, they can come up and ask, he explained it to us. Yeah. Yeah, well said. The, any announcements? Just briefly, we got to go ahead for the Collins Group. The Rules Committee will meet on Monday, the 30th, and on the 31st, so everybody will be aware. If it works out with the Collins Group, we'll have them in here on Tuesday. I'll reach out to them tomorrow. Then we have a city council meeting on the 6th, and then I'm going to call for a special meeting on the 13th to recognize the young kids who performed at the BSO at Symphony Hall, and also the police and fire promotions. And I didn't want to include it in our regular meeting because it would just be too long and too chaotic. So those are the heads up on that. So we have some open dates, so if anybody has anything they want to get on, please reach out to me, and we'll work it out. So seeing no other announcement and no other business before this council, we are adjourned.